Okay. So I will convene a special work session of the Oregon City Commission, the Gladstone City Council, and the West Lynn City Council. We are in Oregon City at our new Carnegie Library edition. And let's start by going around the room and introducing ourselves, starting with Ms. Richmond.
You already said my name, why was I not hearing your name? Just don't forget Alice.
Okay.
From West Lynn.
Exactly.
Okay. West Berlin, actually, but that's okay.
West Berlin, yeah. Brian Shaw, Oregon City Commissioner, and welcome, everybody, to the new Oregon City Library.
Yes. Beautiful.
Nadia Michaelberg, Oregon City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Oregon City Commissioner.
Russ Axelrod, Mayor, West Lynn.
Nancy Ives, City Commissioner, Oregon City.
Dan Holiday, Oregon City Mayor.
Tony Tan, West Lynn Council President.
Neil Reisner, Gladstone City Council.
Lyndon Neads, Gladstone City Council.
Kevin Johnson, Gladstone City Council.
Kim Sickman, Gladstone City Council.
Mr. Johnson, Gladstone City Council.
Bob Martin, West Lynn City Council.
Thomas Frank, West Lynn City Council.
Bob. Sorry. Bob. Martin. Right here. He's right there. Oh, oh, sorry. Counselor Perry is out of town and couldn't be here, didn't he?
I was counting my... She's in here. She's here in square. Okay.
So we've done our directions. I'm going to introduce City Manager Tony Conkel, who will present our guest speaker tonight.
So, welcome, everybody, to the Carnegie Library. I want to say, first off, thank you for being so flexible with your scheduling. I know the last thing all volunteers that you all need is another night meeting. I'd like to thank Chair Ludlow at the last Regional Wastewater. He brought up the idea of Mr. Geist and his consultant coming and presenting to the Commissions. And so, for some reason, I thought it'd be a really good idea to try to get everybody in the same room from Tri-City so that we'd have the opportunity to, one, hear all the information at the same time, and then, two, hopefully, be able to hear everyone's questions and concerns and answers to those, so that we all are making decisions from the same place. Hopefully, this is an opportunity to continue to build on the opportunities that we have before us moving forward. I'd also like to thank Mr. Geist for agreeing to come out and help us with this tonight. I know it was a big ask. I know that a lot has happened with Tri-City and with CCSD and the creation of Water Environmental Services now to run that. And there are probably a lot of questions about that governance. Why did that happen? How does it move forward? What does that look like? I'm hoping that tonight, we can hear from Mr. Geist and his consultant about the question as it relates to the proportion of the rates between CCSD and Tri-City for the digester project. Once we're done with that, and if there's the willingness of the Commission, maybe we can have a discussion then of how we can move forward, if we want to move forward as a group from each of these cities. So I'm hoping that we can stay focused on the one issue that I invited Mr. Geist here for tonight with all of you, and then we can decide as a group where we want to go after that. So if there aren't any questions of me, I'd like to welcome up Greg to begin the presentation.
So before Greg gets started, as I usually do before my meetings, if you have a cellphone, please either turn it off or silence it so that we aren't interrupted during that conversation.
All right. It's great to be here tonight. My name's Greg Geist. I'm the Director of Water and Environment Services. First, I just wanted to acknowledge what a beautiful building this is.
I can hear you. I could hear the other guy.
Oh, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Alice, just go up and stand next to him.
Who's going to move my chair?
Okay. So the reason that I'm here tonight is after the last regional committee meeting, well, it was actually during, and I'd like to thank Chair Ludlow also for volunteering me for this opportunity tonight. And it was really about the financial arrangement that we're proposing. And each member of the regional committee said, okay, yeah, that seems like a somewhat reasonable proposal, but we need to take it back to our councils or commissions. And then we offered, well, if you want us to present that financial information, we'd be happy to do that. So that's what we're going to do tonight. I have kind of a sidelight here tonight. Steve Donovan is our financial consultant. He's the one that's going to talk about the dollars and cents, but we're happy to answer any questions. I'm going to summarize the more engineering side of the conversation from November 9th because that was kind of the culmination of about 18 months' worth of conversation. And I don't think that you guys are particularly interested in Level IV cost estimate ranges and things like that that we discussed. So this is a little bit shorter presentation than what's in the packet tonight, but we gave you a copy so that you can follow along. Fair enough?
No.
All right. So the solids handling project, we'll start out with what the objectives were. Obviously, provide value to ratepayers, increase our solids handling capacity to meet 2040 needs. We want to continue to produce Class B biosolids that we can beneficially reuse through land application. We also wanted to make sure that whatever we do, with respect to the digester, anyway, that we set ourselves up for future regulatory requirements. Right now, we produce what's called a Class B biosolid. We can apply that to non-food agricultural crops, but we're somewhat limited in what we can do with that just due to the level of treatment of that material. So it's the de-watered solids that come out of our digesters. We put it in trucks, take it to Eastern Oregon. There's been threats, not threats, there's been indications from EPA for many years that they are going to require across-the-board compliance with Class A biosolid standards. So what that means for us now is that we want to make sure that if that happens, we have the infrastructure in place that we can make that transition. What that means for this particular project that we're talking about is things like thicker concrete walls because the Class A product or Class A process creates a, uses more heat. We would also need to expand some of our equipment to add that heat. So anyway, we want to make sure that we have at least a foundation for future regulatory compliance should that happen. Yeah, and then we're looking at options as far as septicage receiving and combined heat and power, basically bringing in fat soils and greases from restaurants as a source of revenue. We're not done with that. That's not part of the proposed project. That's something ultimately that we're going to be looking at down the road. So just to give you a quick overview of where we've been at the regional committee, we convened that group in March of 2015. I won't go through all of the dozen meetings that we've had and what the topics, but we've basically stepped through from, hey, we have a capacity issue, this is what it would look like if each district went alone, here's the technologies that we're looking at. We updated a population forecast that ties directly to the 64-36 split that you're going to be hearing about later. So anyway, we've worked through a lot of technical information. What we're talking about tonight is kind of the final piece of that puzzle. We now know what we need to build, we know how much it's going to cost, and we have a pretty decent proposal on how we're going to split that cost between the districts. So just to give you a little bit of background, the solids handling project was originally conceived back in 2007. It consisted of not one, but two additional digesters. These are million-gallon tanks that the solids material that's collected in our treatment facility is basically cooked. They're like big stomachs. They produce gas. We use that gas to heat them and continue the process. And then, like I said, we take that material, de-water it, and send it to Eastern Oregon. So originally, we were talking about two new digesters, a new digester control building, a new solids handling building, and an enclosed truck loadout. That was the original conception. Over the last year to 18 months, Lynne Chacon in particular, and I'm very, very proud of West staff, for really sharpening their pencils and evaluating what we really need and when we need to bring it online. So this was originally a 56-plus-million-dollar project, very significant capital investment. This is what we're looking at now. It's a little difficult to see, but we're looking at one digester, either 1 million-gallon capacity or 1.3 million-gallon capacity. We've moved that digester significantly closer, if you notice, to the existing digester complex. If we go back, you can see that there was a gallery, and it's quite a bit farther actually towards the river as it was originally conceived. So that change alone saved money and got us almost out of the Oregon City's environmental overlay. So we're farther away from the river, which is a good thing for everybody. Rather than having a separate solids building, we would combine that into one building. We put our new solids handling equipment above the truck loadout. We kept the plan to have an enclosed truck loadout. So right now, it's just an open, there's a conveyor belt that dumps biosolids in the back of a truck, and it's open to the air. And there is some odors associated with that. So with the cove development going in and neighbors getting closer, we think it's important from a community standpoint, good neighbor standpoint, to enclose that and control those odors. Bottom line, and I'm going to steal some of Steve's thunder here, is we've taken it from a 56-plus-million-dollar project to a $37.5-million-dollar project by these changes. Just to let you know, kind of a project by, or sub-project by sub-project, these are all of the different projects that we are going to be doing. The purpose, you know, some of it is for capacity expansion. You know, that's to accommodate growth and the estimated cost. Now, you'll notice that this does not say 37.5 million. For whatever reason, Lynne, who gave this presentation in November, we focused on construction costs. So the 31 million is the actual construction cost, 37.5 is the total project cost, including the engineering, legal, and administrative piece. But what is important to notice, and I'll show you in a second what it means, is some of these are for capacity expansion, some of these are just for operational improvement, and some of them are for, basically to rehabilitate the 30-year-old digesters that we have. They need new roofs, they need new piping, a number of things. So when we're talking about sharing costs of this $31 million, actually, 17.7 of that is directly related to the need for growth. That's the part that would be funded, you know, primarily through system development charges that we charge for new development. $13.2 million of that is the operational condition and odor control aspects of the overall project. So when you think about the proposed 64-36 split, yes, that's, you know, essentially the Tri-City folks would be paying 36% of 17.7 million for the capacity expansion, and CCSD Number One would be paying 64% of the refurbishment and operational improvements for the existing facilities, which I think is a pretty darn good deal for Tri-City. Our next steps in schedule, we are finalizing our initial design. We'll be doing value engineering, additional value engineering, now and into early 2017, according to Lynne, and I'm also cautiously optimistic that we can shave additional dollars off the cost of this as we get closer and farther into design. We'll be doing detailed design work next year and start construction spring, summer Questions?
Everybody, are we going to wait for the money guy?
Yeah.
Well, if you've got a question now, Kevin, go ahead. Or we can wait for the money guy. Anybody else?
Yeah.
So, Martin?
Yeah. Would you go back a couple of slides? I think something like that one right there, no. He said something about percentages that Tri-Cities would pay.
Would you speak into the mic?
Do you want to say?
Just go over the percentages of each of these amounts.
Right. Okay. So, yeah, I forget, you know, a lot of, the folks that have been in the room, they're pretty familiar with us. Ever since, well, we can go all the way back, the working assumption back when we started this, when we said, well, how are we going to evaluate whether it makes sense to go it alone or co-invest? A lot of that was based on a 2011 population forecast. And what it said is that over the next 20 years, the growth that's going to occur in both districts, if you add all that up, 64% of the growth is going to be contributed by CCSD Number One, 36% is going to be contributed by Oregon City. So if there's going to be a co-investment, it made sense.
Tri-City.
Tri-City, mostly Oregon City.
Mostly Oregon City. Mostly, but still, that was very good.
So that's, yeah, that's been a working assumption as an equitable, you know, way to share this capacity. If one's going to use more of it, then perhaps one should pay for more of it. What I wanted to show, and these are all of the subcomponents, but not, we're not just going to build the capacity pieces of this because it doesn't make sense from a construction management standpoint or investment, that if we're going to open this thing up, we need to do these other projects, like the odor control, like the emergency power. We need to get our power up. Right now, it's within the floodplain, and so we need to get that up out of the floodplain. But those are not strictly related to growth. So I just wanted to illustrate that the portion that isn't strictly related to growth, CCSD Number One is still going to pay the greater percentage of that that would otherwise fall on Tri-City eventually to pay for.
But did I understand that the part that is related to Tri-City?
Tri-City would pay for 36% of both the growth-related and the operational safety, what do we call it, condition and odor control pieces. So the total project cost with all of this is, well, construction cost is 31 million, total project is 37.5. That would be split 36-64, but that includes all of it, not just the growth-related stuff. Does that make sense?
I understand that I had to hear, but the way you presented it, I thought you were talking about 64% of 17.
Yeah, no, this was just to show that of that total project cost, what was directly related to growth and what isn't.
So I have a question. So without CCSD One, and five years ago, we were told in Oregon City that we had plenty of capacity at the plant. Without CCSD One, we wouldn't need a solids handling expansion.
You would. You would. Yes. Just with Tri-City, it is over the design capacity. We've been through this with the regional committee.
I didn't see the card. So the percentages you're talking about are just from the new population forecast?
Right. They're consistent. We did a forecast in 2011 that Portland State University did. We updated that with Eco Northwest in 2016. In 2011, they projected 37%, 63%, now it's 36%. It's very consistent, but yeah.
But it's all on future growth. My question is, part of the capacity problem is not just from the future, but from what happens in the past. So in other words, I think we should be looking at the last 20 years of growth from each district, not just the future growth.
I thought, maybe I didn't, I brought some of the population numbers, or I thought I did. I guess I didn't. That would be one way to look at it, but that hasn't been discussed in the regional setting. I mean, we're together, we're overcapacity. Separately, we're overcapacity, and this is how we propose to add capacity through 2030.
I'm confused. How can we be overcapacity together and overcapacity separately? That doesn't make any sense to me, given the fact that a director not four years ago told us that we had 20% solids handling capacity for Tri-Cities at the plant.
We are overcapacity just with Tri-City. We are way overcapacity with both. I mean, this is a biological system. It's, it's like, they are like stomachs, and you can overload them for some period of time, and they are massively overloaded until they fail.
Can you give us a figure of massive overload?
You know, we presented that material over a year ago, and I don't have my engineer folks here.
Well, how much capacity do you gain with the cleanout and the other stuff that you're supposed to do this summer at the plant?
We didn't do any kind of cleanout. We, we...
We were supposed to do a take-down and clean-out.
Right, and we weren't able to, we weren't able to do that because we don't have the capacity. It was too risky to do that. We were running both of those digesters. The design criteria is that we run one digester, we have the other for backup. If you come to the plant, you'll see that we have at least two of everything because we need to take stuff offline. We thought that maybe during low-flow, low-loading conditions, we could do it, and when we had our engineering and operational staff look at it, they said, no, we can't.
Mayor Axelrod.
Yeah, I'm just, a question, just sort of in general, overall infrastructure, the new digester is going to meet current seismic requirements and standards. We're going to have to do extra foundation work, and I understand for that.
Right.
What about our prior digesters? What's the status of those? Is this going to involve seismic upgrading of those?
It will, in a sense, because what we're going to do is we're going to use, the thinking from the geotechnical reports is that a big event could send our digesters towards the river. So we're going to put these ones in, we're going to anchor them into bedrock, and that is going to seismically stabilize the existing ones.
So we're going to go do that foundation work on the existing ones as well?
No. So we will tie the new digester.
I know the new one.
Yeah.
I'm asking about the old ones, though.
No. According to our engineers, it will, by virtue, it will kind of be an anchor, and so we won't have to dig those deep and down the bedrock.
Be tied to it?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Tan?
You had said that you discussed those numbers in a previous meeting like a month ago. Maybe if you can send us those numbers later since...
The capacity numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was more like a year ago, more than a year ago.
In the meetings, a year ago. If you can send those numbers, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
I just want to go back to the capacity statement you made a minute ago. We have two, and we couldn't take one down, couldn't take them down for maintenance this summer.
Right.
So, and we're overcapacity with those two. So I'm assuming that when you build a third one, you're going to be using all three of them all the time since you're overcapacity with two. So how are you going to be able to do your maintenance?
We can run on two. What we would do is, it would allow us to take one down because right now, we can run on two. So we would run on one, run on the new one, take one down, rehab, refurbish it, and do the other one as well, clean them out.
So how long would you be able to run on two?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Lynne, our engineer, what she projected, when we would cross that threshold, but my sense is that that's 2030. So what we, the reason that we can get away with one digester is we said, we're going to phase this. Instead of immediately taking a huge bite of capacity and getting what we need all the way out to 2040, we can go to 2030 and only build one digester for now. And I believe that I'd have to verify this with Lynne, but that 2030 is when we would again cross that threshold from a loading standpoint of when we couldn't take one down. I'd have to verify that, though. There are standard engineering criteria that she uses, you know, and it's, you know, during an average month, average annual month, we would have to be able to operate with one digester offline. It's just safety factor kind of stuff that applies across our industry. Same thing with our secondary clarifiers, primaries, all that.
Yeah, as a newbie to this, it's confusing to me when we say we're overcapacity. I think both of those are just jam up and jelly tight. There's no room for anything, and we need a third one, you know, but then we say we can run two.
Yeah.
So evidently, capacity, being at capacity still means you've got room there.
There's, yes, there is a design capacity, which takes into account safety and risk and industry standards. And then there's an absolute capacity. And we don't exactly know, because again, because it's a biological system, we don't know exactly when that catastrophic event is going to happen and they go into upset. Based on our engineering, we think that if we get this thing built in 2020, we will be okay. And, but we are putting in operational contingencies, working with other communities and private haulers, in case we exceed the absolute capacity before we are able to bring the additional digester online. We're also maximizing our flows in that time period to Kellogg to try to relieve those of as much loading as we can.
You have other questions? Sir? Eric, you had to wait to hear my...
Just a quick question. So, in the, I'm Eric Swanson, City Administrator at Gladstone. And you're the mayor of Oregon City, right?
That's all right. You weren't on the race against.
Let's get that clarified. Anyway, just want to clarify, so the PowerPoint that I was sent, based on this meeting, has a lot more info on rates and stuff, so we're going to...
Right, I explained that, or maybe you weren't here yet.
Yeah. The second question, I don't see a lot of timelines in terms of the, you mentioned before the discussion about design and how long that would take and the cost. I mean, and you're looking at building this by 2020. Is there some timeline that talks about the design? Okay.
And I'm sure Lynne, our Capital Planning Manager, has a much more detailed timeline, but this is what we presented.
Okay. So I guess what the reason I'm asking is the permitting part of it, I just want to state in the record that, you know, basically, most of the impact of this expansion is going to be relative to the city of Gladstone, it's going to be the biggest population impacted. I know in other situations in the county, Milwaukee, where they've had some sort of a mitigation fund set up for these communities, Milwaukee in specifically, I just want us to be thinking about that, and especially during the permitting phase, that is an issue. It's, you know, it's, I hope we can improve the smell, but, you know, I've been around a lot of wastewater plants, you can't completely eliminate those, and we have, you know, a large recreation area that's close by, so I just, and then, you know, Oregon City's got a big development. I just want us to really know that, you know, that that's going to be part of that process, and especially in the permitting process. Thank you.
Yep. We want to be a good neighbor.
You put it out before we move on. Okay.
So this is the dollars and cents part of the talk. Come on up, Steve.
My name is Steve Donovan. I'm the money guy. My office address is 9600 Southwest Oak, Suite 335, Portland, Oregon 97223. I've been working on this project since its inception. I know most of you people in this room, so I think all of you know me. I'm going to talk about the rate impacts of this program and this project tonight, but the first thing we've got to talk about is funding the project. You can't have rates unless you've got the project funded. So what we're talking about tonight from a recommendation, staff recommendation that we'll be making to the board in short order, I suspect. We're going to talk about an equity contribution, and we're going to be talking about a long-term debt component to fund this project. So it's kind of the standard X's and O's of infrastructure financing. Give you some numbers to talk about. First, how much have we spent on the project to date? Through fiscal 1516, which will be June 30, 2016, we spent $354,526. As Greg pointed out, the total program budget for this solids handling project is now $37,500,000. That includes construction costs, engineering, legal, overhead, and contingency. What I want to show you now is, this is a very standard situation for a project like this, a very, we'll call it baseload-type project. We've got cash flows of the project that add up to $37,500,000, but they go over five years, and they go in irregular chunks of cash flow. So we're going to need a funding strategy that can match this cash flow. And what we're recommending is an application to the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality's Clean Water State Revolving Loan Program. Now, this is a subsidized program, and it's a loan program. The really great thing about the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Program, of which Service District Number One is servicing two loans now, and Tri-City Service District just retired a 20-year loan last year, is that it's a, for lack of a better term, it's a line of credit, a revolving line of credit. When you need the cash, you send the bills to the DEQ, they pay it. All you're responsible for throughout this timeframe is the accrued interest on the loan outstanding. You don't pay back any principal outstanding until the end, when the loan flips into a 20-year loan. Anybody here built a house? Ever have a construction loan? You get a line of credits and you do that construction loan and you burn through the construction, then at the end of the construction loan, it flips to a mortgage? It's the same thing. So what are the terms of the loan? Let's talk about the project cost. First, we're talking $37,500,000. That's the total nut. We're suggesting, and we're going to recommend to the board, that $18,750,000 or half of that project be an equity contribution. And Bob, you were talking about that pie chart, that's 17 million and 13 million? Well, that's 17 million of the green slice. That represents about 57% of, of the total project cost is attributable to capacity. That means they're SDC eligible. 57% of the project is SDC eligible. We used 50% to be conservative for this analysis, and we're going to stick with it. So now we've got $18,750,000 that has to be borrowed. Under the terms of the current program, the interest rate, when we did this, is 1.79%. And there's an administrative fee on the principal outstanding that the DEQ charges. So the total fee would be 2.29%.
And how is that held through 20 years? I mean, we don't know what the economy's going to do in the next five years. Interest rates go up, how is that?
It's fixed. Yeah, it's fixed.
Okay.
That's, that's another really, really nice thing about this program. Now, another thing that, I talked about some of the terms of this program, and I'm going to get a little wonky on you here. You as city officials, you, you borrow money all the time, general obligation bonds, revenue bonds, you're, you're big debtors. You, you, you do that and you use debt a lot. And under this program, as of today, that 1.79%, DEQ's offering the loan for 1.6%. But they change that interest rate every three months, based on usually the 10-year treasury note. So that, that number's going to bounce around. And we've seen, just since the president's election, that interest rates have gone up quite a bit. All the money's left the bond market, it's headed into the stock market. So all you guys are rich in your stock portfolios, but the bond market, interest rates have gone up. Because all the money's left the bond market, that means the demand for bonds has gone down, that means the price has gone up, the rates have gone up. So I suspect this number may go up in the next 30 days, or the next 60, 90 days. But the other interesting thing about this loan is the rate covenant. And you, if, are you all familiar with a, a rate covenant? Which means we have to have a certain amount of money at all times coming in the door in excess of our debt service. On revenue bonds for the Service District Number One, it's 1.2x. On this loan, it will be 1.05x. It's subsidized by the EPA and the federal government. Second, debt service reserve account has to be funded for these types of loans. Under a standard revenue bond, it will be one year's principal and interest payment, which would be held in a reserve account at all times. For this loan, it will be one half of one year's debt service. Again, subsidized. And then closing costs. Under a standard revenue bond, we'd be hiring bond counsel, we'd be hiring pricing agents, we'd be hiring underwriters. None of that is needed here. This is all handled through the DEQ. You just fill out the application and you don't have any carrying costs or closing costs. And these applications are done on a regular basis, and just from the technical standpoint, you have to get your project approved, it has to get on what's called the Intended Use Plan, as defined by the EPA, who funds this project and is administered to the states. We've done it before. I've talked to the DEQ project manager this morning, and he's fully aware of this project and anticipating an application coming in the door. The next application close date is December 9th, 2016. We won't make that date. The next one after that will be April 14th, 2017. We fully intend to make that date. So what happens when you take $18,750,000, amortize it over 20 years at 2.29%? What that turns into is $1,179,029 in annual principal and interest payments over 20 years. So here is the answer that you've been looking for, and bear with me, this can be a bit confusing. Look at the first two columns. In this case, CCSD Number One, this is the funding responsibility of the project, starting at 50% and then increasing by roughly five percentage point increments up to 100%. So at, at 100%, Service District Number One would pay for the entire project and Tri-City would pay for none of the project. The rate impact in that case would be $1.84 per month, per EDU to Service District Number One, and it would be zero to Tri-City. So do you see my fulcrum here? The yellow line is our recommendation right now. And remember the 60, Bob, the 64% and 36%? Based on the 2016 Eco-Northwest Population Study, it says 64% of future growth will come from Service District Number One, 36% will come from Tri-City. Under that scenario, when this loan flips and the project is done in 2021, the rate impact to Service District Number One would be $1.18 per EDU per month. The corresponding impact would be $1.05 per EDU per month to the Tri-City Service District. Neil, I've got some, some sour looks on your face. Can I, can you, can I help you?
Well, when TC, you know, Tri-City is a third, basically, you're talking about 36% versus 64.
Right.
And you're only talking, you know, 13 cents difference. Well, I, I wasn't going to wake up.
No, no, that's, and that's a question that came up at, at our last meeting. It's because Service District Number One is bringing in significantly more EDUs than the Tri-City Service District. So even though Service District Number One is taking on a greater responsibility, funding responsibility, they've got more EDUs to spread it over. Versus Tri-City has a lower funding responsibility, but fewer EDUs in the denominator to spread that cost over. Does that make sense to you?
Moving on.
Sure. So what we've also got here is increments, but I won't bug you on that. So let me show you, based on current rates, and I want you to look at this scale here. This is the funding responsibility for Service District Number One, going from 50% by roughly five percentage point increments up to 100%. Here is the unit increases. Now currently, the monthly rate for Service District Number One is $45 per EDU per month. At the 64% split, they would, their rate would go up to $46.18, and I'm being disingenuous with you here, saying that rate would be static up to 2021. There are many other things going on that will impact that $45 rate. I just wanted to show graphically here what's going on. There are many other things that go on that will impact that rate, so I'm not trying to be devious with you. Here is the Tri-City rate at $20 per EDU per month. At 64%, that rate would go up to $22.55. And obviously, if Tri-City paid nothing and Service District Number One paid 100%, their rate would be unchanged.
Just for record, the, the current rate is 2150.
I'm sorry, I'm dyslexic. It's 2150.
That's your question?
Certainly.
On the, Tony, Mike.
On the $1.05 per EDU?
Sure.
Is that based on today's EDU or the projected?
That is based on the projected EDUs of 2021. And Mayor Holliday, you're right. If you look at, then you study the Eco-Northwest Study, the slope of the line of Oregon City's growth between today and 2021 is very steep. There's a, a projection of a lot of population coming into your city.
I know.
Almost all of it from Tri-City is coming from Oregon City, so you've got your hands full.
Welcome to my world.
So what this line shows is, just in line charts, that spread for CCSD Number One. And here is that increment of, of rate for this project. And remember that $1.18 we talked about at 64%? So what we're, what the staff had asked me is, as we move five percentage points up funding responsibility for Service District Number One, how much more does that mean to that average customer's rate if I go from 75% to 80% to 90%? And if you look at those changes, it's about a dime per EDU per month as we climb that, that curve of funding responsibility. Correspondingly, for Tri-City, here at the $1.05, as Service District Number One takes on more of the funding responsibility, it's about 20 cents for each 5% increment that's taken on by Service District Number One. So that's the level of, of, of change we're talking about there. So what happened? The biggest thing that happened to make this very affordable, in my judgment, is the project cost came down from $56.4 million that we talked about a year ago to $37.5 million now. That is absolutely the biggest impact to the rate.
But in reality, that's, you're just delaying that, right? I mean, you're talking about in another, what, 16, 14 years of having to build that fourth digester?
I'll.
You said 2030, right?
2040, 2040 is the next one.
Well, the number you, Greg said is 2030.
2030 is when we would need to bring on an additional digester tank. We've projected the cost.
So it'd be 20 then 2028, because you've got to build it too, right?
Correct. Yeah. That would be a six to eight million dollar project, because we would, at that point, have the infrastructure to support it already built. So we've, what was a $56 million project is now a 37. When we add the second tank, we're at 45, so.
Well, but you're also 14 years later, so it's probably at least another $4 million more money than it is in $8 million today.
I, I, it, it will be more expensive to build in the future. If you're suggesting we should build two tanks now, I would be.
Cute.
All right. Wes is in a financial position to cash finance the 50% equity contribution. And I'm expecting some questions here, like, where's that money going to come from? Well, the money's going to come from STCs and it's going to come from fund balance. And the money is there. The big key is what's going to happen in Oregon City for Tri-Cities. For, if, if we believe the numbers and we believe the growth that's going to be coming your way, you're going to be generating a significant number of STCs and a significant dollar value of those STCs that will be plowed into this project. For giggles, I asked the Wes accounting staff today, how much money do they have? And all funds operating, construction and SDC. Service District Number One has $42 million on hand. Roughly 32 of that is between construction and STCs. Tri-City Service District has about 13, of which about eight is in construction and STCs. So there is cash, there is horsepower. This is a good story, folks. This is a very good story. I go across the whole nation, and a lot of times, we're talking about utilities that don't have any money and they're out of capacity. So you're in a position to attack this project and make an equity contribution, which helps us manage the rates. Based on the, the cost allocation of the 6436, which is the recommendation that we'll be making, the impact in 2021, as Tony pointed out, on total future EDUs is $1.18 for Service District Number One and $1.05 for the Tri-City Service District.
That's assuming there's no SDC contribution.
Oh, no. Part of that $18.5 million equity contribution, a lion's share of that will come from STCs in our judgment. That's it, folks.
Counselor Johnson? Oh, sorry. One.
So you said, I think it was 57% of the project is SDC available?
Eligible.
Eligible. And how much in STCs are there right now? And I'm assuming that's, you're projecting the future growth, STCs also. Does it come up to the 57%?
Yep.
Really?
Let me tell you right now. Remember, keep in mind, $18,500,000, that's that equity number that's walking around. As of right now, Service District Number One has 17.6 million in STCs, Tri-City has 2.3 million. As this project unfolds and as Oregon City grows, that fraction coming from Tri-City, that 2.3 million, will get larger. And we fully expect to see that occur, so that is.
What about Happy Valley?
Happy Valley's, it got the growth in here too, so we'll, we'll be seeing that coming too. Absolutely. All, all of those districts will be, will be charging STCs.
But not all the SDC fees goes into this project, right?
No, not necessarily.
I mean, they can use it for.
It's fungible, absolutely.
So how do you know the percentage of STCs from Oregon City or any other place that's going to go into this and not into infrastructure?
Because there's a specific number for sewer and water, cars.
I understand that.
Other stuff, so we have to pay a certain amount to Tri-City's in our STCs.
I understand. Part of your SDC sewer fees can go to your infrastructure in your city, correct?
Well, for increasing capacity. No, no, there's also, there's also an SDC that's charged by Tri-City to Oregon City for each individual building permit. So that SDC goes directly to Tri-City.
So that's all of the SDC that's going to Tri-City? The rest of the SDC is staying in Oregon City?
That's correct, but there is a, there is a piece that the Tri-City Board sets for Oregon City, Westland and Gladstone, for each building permit that then goes to Tri-City to pay for that growth. For just the plant, for just the sewer, waste, sewer and wastewater, yeah. Mr. Con.
So when we, when Oregon. When Oregon, so we, we charge an SDC for the Oregon City local sewer. So when we updated our Oregon City sanitary sewer master plan, we came up with a capital improvement plan list, and we charge an SDC for that. And then when a building permit comes in, we also have an SDC that we charge that we receive from Tri-City, and that gets updated for the infrastructure costs related to the Tri-City plant. So they are two separate funds, based on two separate master plans.
So you're using only the one SDC fund, right?
Only STCs charged by the Tri-City Service District would, would come into the Tri-City SDC fund. That's correct.
Counselor Johnson, too.
There's a certain Rube Goldbergness to this. I need to get that together. So I'll carefully walk away.
Can you turn it off?
It's on.
No, it's on.
It is on.
Put your batteries in, Alice.
It's, it's on, I can, I can hear it. Okay. So first of all, I'd like to say that we've already endured one rate increase of $1.50, so this, all these numbers are in addition to the $1.50 that was already imposed upon us. I'd like to know where, in all of these numbers, the value of the, the value of the bond payments that the people of Tri-City did for their sewer plant, where is that realized? You know, it, it's almost like we, we are not seeing that value anyplace. There's no buy-in by CCSD Number One. It's just, okay, we're starting from zero and we're going to move on from there. So where is the value of all that money that the people of Tri-City invested into that plant over the bonding period? Where, where is that shown in your numbers?
It will be shown in the reimbursement component of the system development charge charged by the Tri-City Service District. That equates to the book value of the utility plant and service. That becomes the basis for the reimbursement or the buy-in charge for new connections to the system. And effectively, the Tri-City Service District is effectively fully depreciated. All of the value that, from the accountant's now, Steve, from the CPA, and depreciation is a figmentation of the, is a figment of the accountant's imagination. The plant is fully depreciated. It has been effectively used up. If you look at the balance sheet of the Tri-City Service District.
Okay, but from reality, we wouldn't be starting from zero. We have an operating sewer plant.
You've got an operating sewer plant.
The fluid flushes, it gets treated.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so there's still value there. And from an accounting standpoint, I understand what you're saying, but, okay, so the, the magic happens within the world of STCs, is what you're saying.
That's right. And your good friend Mayor Holliday and all of his EDUs that he's bringing in, is bringing that value back into the Tri-City Service District with the growth that's going to occur, almost all of it, between 2016 and 2017.
And from an accounting standpoint, I understand what you're saying, but, okay, so the magic happens within the world of STCs is what you're saying.
That's right. And your good friend Mayor Holliday and all of his EDUs that he's bringing in is bringing that value back into the Tri-City Service District with the growth that's going to occur, almost all of it, between 2016 and 2021, if you believe that study, the growth study.
I don't, but that's okay. Next question. I watched the last regional wastewater meeting this morning.
I'm sorry.
And yes, I was, I wish, I wish I could get my time back for that. Greg Geist made mention of Kellogg Creek and there was a lot of talk about some awfully big projects with some awfully big numbers, including a $50 million upgrade for Kellogg Creek. What is the responsibility of the Tri-City people for the Kellogg Creek plant?
I can answer that. Nothing, zero.
You have to come to a mic if you're gonna talk so that we can hear.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll handle it. It's not 50 million, it's less.
The sound was not good. It could very well have been 15, not 50, but I heard, I heard 50.
And the project cost is entirely borne by Service District Number One.
Okay. And I think I also heard that the collector whatever project is not a Tri-City project.
That's correct. Right now is a collection system master plan being carried out. Almost 100% of that will be borne by Service District Number One. And it's gonna be a big number. It's gonna be a very large number.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Maguire.
I guess this is a question to city staff. Are the current STCs, are the current STCs that Oregon City, or new construction in Oregon City paying accounted for, is this new cost accounted for in those STCs?
You're right. I think it's a Tri-City, that's a staff issue.
Tri-City staff question?
No, our staff, I think, right?
It should be a Tri-City question.
Okay, sorry.
So our, our infrastr, our sanitary sewer master plan has been updated for our local system. So I think that when we have the second SDC, that's coming from.
Right, and I can, I can answer that, Commissioner. The answer is, right now, the Tri-City Service District is on a glide path for a five-year increase in STCs. Mayor Holliday, you were at that group where we went through a considerable exercise, three, two years, three years ago now. And rather than doing a massive increase in the SDC, which was under statute allowable, the Tri-City Service, the Tri-City Advisory Committee made a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to phase it in over five years. And we're in that phase in period now. We'll get it up to $3,800 within two years now when we're on that glide path.
But you didn't act on that for two years after the Tri-City Advisory Committee made the recommendation to increase the STCs?
That's right. It was a failure of failure staff. It's our fault. We will be revisiting STCs on a regular basis. It's the policy of the Board to regularly review system development charges based on capacity plans and capital plans. I just mentioned the collection system master plan will be finishing up here within a year. That's gonna add costs. Some of those costs for Service District Number One will be SDC eligible and we'll probably be reviewing those for eligibility. So it's a regular occurrence that happens.
Counselor Frank?
Afraid to touch this thing. All right. All right, so I got a couple of questions. First of all, on, on your projection here of interest and using this credit line that you had mentioned. Looking at that particularly, you had mentioned that we had to go through DEQ or EPA and be listed on one of their project lists and there's an application.
The intended use plan and the application, yes.
Are you fairly confident that we're gonna qualify and be on that list or is this a hopeful?
We have met with the DEQ three times now. We have sent correspondence back and forth. We are one of their better creditors, by the way, Wes being, we have two loans for the North Plaquemine Revitalization Area. One of those loans, you're gonna love this, you guys, was about a $10 million loan. It was under the American Resource and Recovery Act. It was 50% of the principal was forgiven and the interest rate on the balance was zero. The second loan is a similar loan, but it is a 3% loan, I believe. Tri-City Service District run just recently retired a 20-year construction loan, a 1995 series loan that was retired in 15. I spoke to Evan Haas, the program manager for the Northwest Region that manages this program. He's expecting our application and he fully expects this to be on the intended use plan and they have a lot of money.
Okay, well, that's, that's very positive. And then the flip side is if we don't get listed there, we have to go back to geo-bond?
We'd probably use a revenue obligation.
Okay.
Or we would look at any, there's also another loan program that's, that's very helpful. It's the lottery money, the Oregon Lottery, Oregon Business. They have a water and sewer special projects fund where they make loans, low-interest loans. We would qualify for that too.
Okay.
But this is absolutely, in my judgment, one of the best programs ever administered by the EPA through the states.
The interest rate in particular, I mean, it's, it's very favorable overall. When does that get locked in? Once we're on the list or once we're, we're gonna pull the money out?
Once we sign the contract. And that's the other wonderful thing about this is during the construction period, we're making construction draws, we're not charged anything except that accrued interest at that rate. So we lock that rate and we go through construction. Commissioner Ludlow said, wait a minute, they do that? He was absolutely, they're gonna do that? It's a very good program.
All right, so the contract with the contractor, not the EPA?
The, we contract with DEQ.
Okay.
DEQ is the agent of EPA as the state of Oregon.
Okay.
They're, they're the granting agent.
Okay.
And then we have that contractual relationship. We hire contractors to build things and to do sort. They send us a bill, we send the bill to the DEQ and they pay the bill until the project's complete.
Okay, so that, when we sign with DEQ then, that is when our rate is locked?
Absolutely.
Okay, right, thank you.
Mayor Axaroff. Well, you kind of addressed a little bit in addressing Counselor Frank's comment, but for this, any thoughts about the, this intended use period? You said we weren't gonna make a December date. Is there a reason we can't make the December date? We have to wait till, you said February, was it?
It will be April 14th, 2017. I don't think we could get loan documents and all of the paperwork done in, what, eight days? It's gonna be eight days now from, from the day of this meeting. And the other thing is, we haven't had any adult supervision from the Board yet. The Board hasn't told us what to do.
All right. Well, it's an exceptional program and I guess my question was, what do you think in the new federal administration, are we gonna maybe even see this project, this program continuing next year? That's one of the, it seems a little risky maybe. I don't, I don't know where, what direction it's gonna go. No one knows.
If you believe President-elect Trump, he's gonna have a trillion-dollar infrastructure funding package coming out the door in his first 100 days. That would only be positive for what, for our needs, but I'm with you, Mayor, I don't know. All I know is the program is funded now and it's funded through the biennium as, as it's written.
I'd also add that, so DEQ receives a cap grant every year and that varies, several million dollars per year. But they've been, this program's been around since the Clean Water Act.
Right.
And so over the years, the idea is that they get that money, they loan it out and then they get returns and they build up a pool. And so they probably have $100 million, you know, they may get a cap grant for, you know, $7 million next year, but they've got a pile of money behind that that they've accumulated over the last 30 years.
Okay.
Just wanna clarify a couple of things. The 18.75 million in investment, that's gonna use the same split that you're talking about with TCSD and CCSD, 36%, 64%?
Yes.
Okay. We're shooting for a 2020 build date.
By June 30th, '21 would be the fiscal '21 fiscal year, so June 30th, '21.
And so we're basically building capacity for 10 years, financing it over 20?
Yes. Well, I, no, I take that back. That capacity should be sufficient when you, to serve that, that act, that population base that it's designed for well past 10 years.
Well, 2030 is what.
As a growth, as more growth comes in, we'll have to add more capacity to serve that new growth. But the incremental capacity that we're designing that infrastructure for today will certainly be longer than, than 10 years. You think about a digester, it's a steel reinforced, it's a concrete steel reinforced tank. They last a long time.
I understand that, but according to Mr. Geist, we would reach capacity at 2030. So if it's completed in 2020, our capacity would be good for 10 years and we're still paying for it for 20 years and we're gonna have to start again in 2018.
But the infrastructure, but the infrastructure that we're investing in for that increment of capacity will serve that capacity for well past 10 years, more like 30 or 40 years. You're right, we'll have to bring on additional increments of capacity to host, to serve new growth that's coming in. So that's, that's what, it's the layer cake approach.
Okay.
And we face that all the time in infrastructure.
Then I wanna kind of come back to what Mr. Johnson asked because I don't quite understand how Tri-Cities is getting a value out of this. I understand the equipment has been depreciated out. Tri-City's plant owns all of that land. They own all of the equipment except for the membrane plant on there. CCSD Number One is bringing in 64% of the new costs and everything else and they're just setting it on top of TCSD property. And TCSD has bought and paid for that. How are they being compensated for the investment they've already made?
This is the fundamental question of go it alone or co-invest. If you go it alone, you don't have the support of the Service District Number One EDUs coming in the door to help fund the project. If you fundamentally believe that you don't need any more capacity and that you're just fine the way you are, then we have an impasse that we can never probably bridge because we believe that there's a capacity problem and that we are on a critical path to solve that capacity problem. We think co-investing is the most cost-efficient and effective way and environmentally sensitive and responsible way to handle that.
I'm not arguing that. Is what I'm asking is, how is the Tri-Cities that has already invested in infrastructure, property, all these other things, how are they being, what are they getting out of allowing CCSD to continue coming forward? I mean, I can speak for Gladstone alone, in the last five years, we have increased by eight people. We just got the Portland State study in the mail this last week.
Eight, 08.
Eight people, okay? So capacity, yeah, Gladstone doesn't have a capacity issue, but being part of Tri-Cities, we understand we have an obligation to help support that plant for them. We don't have an obligation for a plant that we have already bought and paid for to help support CCSD Number One by just allowing them to pay their fair share of the upgrades, their fair share of the capacity.
Well, Kevin, I guess I got, I'm gonna push back a little bit here. You're concerned that you're not getting compensated from Service District Number One for, for you hosting them, as it were. In the next five years, Mayor Holliday's gonna bring more growth in either of you two combined. And if you buy our argument that you're out of capacity, that same argument that you're making to Service District Number One should probably apply to him. How is he gonna compensate you for hosting his growth?
And I'd be more than happy to have that conversation.
Well, which is the point, when you, when you start talking, which is the point, when you start talking co-investment, basically the county has already co-opted that argument because the fact is, is you've already done it. So all of this discussion is really moot to the fact that the county has unilaterally gone forward and said, we're gonna mix these two organizations together, we're gonna co-mingle their funds and you're not gonna have any say over your rates or over anything about Tri-City. And the fact is, is that you did it by an emergency ordinance whereby we couldn't even have this opportunity to refer to our voters. And that's the only reason you did it in an emergency ordinance.
To answer, to add to that answer to your question, Kim, that's the reason I showed you that pie chart. That's just one of the benefits. So that the upgrades and the improvements that aren't related to growth, that, just by virtue of having a 30-year-old facility that needs work, Tri-City does not bear the cost of that. They bear 34% of the cost of that instead of 100%. That's a clear example where CCSD Number One is contributing to the overall infrastructure that benefits Tri-City and to some degree them. But they're basically gonna help rehabilitate a 30-year-old facility.
So I understand that Oregon City is growing. I've, I've got that. But one only needs to drive out to Happy Valley and Incorporated to see what explosive growth looks like and there is a whole lot of land out there. And if you go farther out, you know, here we are with our growth of eight over five years. We're gonna end up paying for growth all the way to South Gresham and when we've had literally no say over that at all. Man, it's just nothing. And, and there's never been a, a thing come together that shows, well, what's gonna happen if we just stayed as Tri-City? I mean, that was never really considered. It's all, you know, this is, this is a heck of a good deal. The county commission agrees with itself, Wes agrees with itself and, and, you know, they all tell us what a great deal it is. But, you know, I'm not sure that it really is. This is where you start to talk about an independent governing agency, it's governed by ratepayers instead of people that live in rural Canby and Molalla area. So, you know, it does bother me a little bit. We're, we're going to be responsible as, as time passes for an awful lot of growth well beyond Oregon City and nothing that the people of Tri-City ever voted for when they formed a district in 1980. I don't know if there's anything to be done about it, but that's really where we are. So, you know, you're talking about 64 or 37 split, hell, CCSD should be paying 100% of this. I mean, they're, they're the ones that are coming into what is really a working plant. They should have some buy-in and, you know, this, this idea that they get away with such a great deal. I'm sorry, Eric Holfield isn't here. I know he'd be very upset about that, but doggone it, pay for it and, and don't, don't make us do it because we already bought it. We've got all the capacity we need. I've said that many times, it falls on deaf ears, but anyway, I'll move on.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Lewis has a couple of questions.
So I got, I've got three questions that are kind of, the questions within the questions. I'm John Lewis, I'm the Public Works Director for Oregon City. So my questions are related to digester capacity, so Greg, I might need a little help from you on this one. I guess I'm still struggling. The 64, 36%, that's also similar to what we do for operations and maintenance. Aren't those percentages similar?
75, 25. So 25% of the flow that goes into that plant comes from CCSD Number One through the intertie and through, yeah, through the intertie. And so CCSD Number One pays 25% of most of the O and M for the entire facility.
CCSD pays for most of that?
Yes, which is another way that, that Tri-City benefits from that relationship.
Okay. So does that mean that 75% of the flows are coming from CCSD?
75% are coming from Tri-City.
From Tri-City, okay. 75% of the flows are coming from Tri-City today, but because of the growth projections, the rate goes from that percentage to a 64, 36?
No, it's a little different than that. So actually, the, the amount of material that comes to that facility from, from CCSD Number One through the intertie, beginning in 2011, started at zero. It's gradually ramped up and we believe that we hit about 25% last year, which is what we have based that O and M split on. We're gonna be probably less than that this next fiscal year because we're trying to send as much as we can to Kellogg. That's just the amount of flow that comes into the front of the facility. What we're talking about is the, the capacity or the, the amount of loading that's gonna be, come online in the next 20 years, being 100% and, and 64% of that growth happening in CCSD Number One and 36% in Tri-City. So it doesn't have as much to do with overall flows to the plant as, as who is gonna be, start out today, who is gonna be using what potential percentage of that additional capacity.
Okay, so if the cutoff were, if we were to cut off that 25%, if we were to close the pipes of those, you know, just turn the valves on those, I know there's not valves on them, but if we.
There is a valve, actually.
If we turn those off, it'd be a 25% reduction today, right? Today, and we would.
Well, average annual.
Average annual, whatever, there's, and we would still be without digester capacity if we shut the valve.
Yes.
So how do we round that out in five years?
I don't know what information you might have received five years ago, but, I mean, we, we ran the numbers.
Okay, so.
I mean, I thought we got, frankly, I thought that we covered the. I mean, I thought we got, frankly, I thought that we covered the capacity issue pretty well a year and a half ago when we first started this conversation.
Well, I guess that's debatable. But anyway, my next question is rates.
I mean, the facility's 30 years old, and it's, the population has doubled. I mean, I think intuitively, there's a, it's not unreasonable to think that we might have a capacity issue.
Okay. Rates and equalization of rates. I'm confused about that. Based on the IPA, or the, what's it called, the Intergovernmental Partner Agreement that was just signed, that sounded very much like equalization of rates. So, I'm taking from that, the city of Boring, whoever's paying in Damascus, Gladstone, Oregon City, Happy Valley, we would be paying an equalized rate, right, at some point in time.
We are going to talk about that when the time is right to talk about that. That's not what we're here to talk about. Tonight, we're talking about co-investment on the digesters. How the 190 partnership is implemented into the future is going to be a 12- to 18-month conversation with our stakeholders, with the board.
Okay.
So it's really not, I apologize, but it's, I'm not, I wasn't asked to speak to that tonight, and I'm not really prepared to speak to that.
But we are incurring a 20-year debt with this project as proposed, and so, the current ratepayers are paying that debt, right? They're either paying the 18.75 through the SDCs that they paid, but we're building that capacity for future growth that is unrealized, right, at this point? So, they, that may not happen in 20 years. That growth may not turn out to be, the Damascus, yeah, the Damascus area may not develop in 20 years, but, but we would be, we as ratepayers would be on board, on, on the hook for making that payment. Is that right?
For Tri-City, the 36%.
Correct. That's correct. And those future connections, when they do come on, will pay a system development charge to reimburse existing ratepayers for their investment in that capacity today.
Okay, so the SDC piece is another good question that I was, I'm having in my mind is, are we using that 18.75 million dollars? I'm sure there's an SDC analysis out there that says how that would have been spent. Is what you're proposing different than what was originally planned? Are we spending down our SDC reserves that were planned for something else that would, that will then have to be made up in the future?
Possibly, possibly. I mean, SDCs are fungible. They are by statute a one-time expense on new development that can be used to fund existing in-place capacity, or the expansion of oversizing for future capacity. When projects actually occur, and when growth actually occurs, it's always different than what we planned, John. You know that.
So, for future phases, right, for future, which there are many, and we're talking about $1.05, which is hardly worth a lot of argument here.
That's our judgment.
Albeit, but the, the planned phases are both going to, we're going to have to make up what we're, you're selling this on spending down revenues that were planned maybe for this, some for this, but not as much. And, and so, it's going to go from $1.05 to something else in the future. I just think it's important for this group to realize that there's big phases, there's big improvements.
For the Tri-City Service District, this project is, is, got the highest component of capacity expansion. Most of the projects, and correct me if I'm wrong, most of the projects on the capital improvement list for the Tri-City Service District are replacement projects. Replacing infrastructure, replacing pump stations that have to be replaced, because they're 30, 40 years old. So, this, this is the capacity-expanding project in the eyes of Tri-City Service District. That may not be the case for Service District number one.
Counselor Kevin Johnson.
So you said the current O&amp;M is 25, 75. With the 60, 40, with the 64, 30 split coming in, what will the new O&amp;M percentages be?
Sorry, I have a, 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 a,[1122.33]